The next item for discussion is on school changes update, community engagement process update and planning tools. And the following commitment and strategy of the AST 2015-2020 strategic plan is being addressed. Commitment eight, generate leverage and utilize strategically all resources and strategies eight point one, we will acquire necessary resources. Dr. Cruz?
Yes. Thank you, President Olivas and board members. As we're transitioning, we're going to just put up one slide that is in your backup material. I looked over to my left and while we have all of our amazing associate superintendent's and executive directors, I do want just to welcome two of our new ones to our family, two new executive directors, Debbie Warnkin, former principal of Cowan, and Lakeisha Drinks, formerly principal of Gettio Thompson. Thank y'all for being here today. Gosh, that's really weird to say former principals of these schools, right? Because it just seems like you think of Cowan, you think of Debbie, you think of Gettio Thompson, and you think of Lakeisha. Because, you know, y'all been there a long time, and Lakeisha opened up Gettio Thompson. But so, I just wanted to welcome y'all here. Thank y'all for that. Now, I know I'm going to get tomorrow, how come you didn't welcome us when I, when we first got here? I know, I just thought about that because I saw. But anyway, yeah. But that's why I said, all of them are fabulous and all of them are amazing. Just, they're a little competitive group over there, but I got to protect our new ones. So with that, I do want us to make sure we put up the slide on the reinvention roadmap. Let's put that up, and then we're going to open it up for other comments. Because we want to start off, since this is a process and it is a roadmap, we want to show you exactly where we are in our roadmap and where we are at this point. Well, we can go ahead and start on comments, and then we'll just come back at the end as this is where we are in our process. We are still on target for a board vote in October. So the board vote in October, as far as school names and school, I'm sorry, school names, school changes, so that's still in October. We do have work sessions planned, and we'll, we're just backtracking from there. But let me turn this over to Michelle to open up the item, and then we'll just highlight exactly where we are in the process at this point. Michelle Cavazos.
Thank you. So, as you know, that every single one of our students in Austin ISD deserves the opportunity and access to experience a 21st century education that prepares them for their dynamic and changing future. And so, modernized schools and learning spaces allow for the new programming and spaces that engage and inspire our students. And that's why we're going through all of this. So tonight, we want to provide you an update with where we are in the planning process. And then, we also want to share the community visioning objectives for those sessions, as well as the objectives for the think tanks that are coming up.
So, once we bring that up, my name's Matias Segura, operations officer for the Austin Independent School District. Operations officer for the Austin Independent School District. Apologize, didn't have my microphone on. So, in y'all's package, you have the reinvention roadmap. This was approved by the board back in February. Once it comes up, what we'll like to point you to is where we are today. In our reinvention roadmap, we had a board work session, board work session number three, though I think we're now beyond three. And today, our goal was to give you an update regarding where we are in the process, and then, again, give some updates regarding what's kind of coming in the weeks ahead. That being said, teams have been working very, very hard, continuing to build up the database, making sure they have a complete and accurate kind of description of all the data that we have. There is a tremendous amount of information that we've been collecting, cleaning, just to make sure that whenever we make an informed decision, we are using the latest and greatest data sets. Do you want to bring it up?
Well, we can point everybody, you do have the backup in your, in your materials. So, where is June 2019?
Correct.
Where it says work session three, process update, communications update.
Correct.
Basically, where we are right now at this point in time. I'm sorry, Matias, were you mentioning something?
No, you're, you're correct.
All right.
So, between phase three and four, and again, so phase three was development of the scenarios, and phase four was analyzing the scenarios. One of the other parts of your backup package is the, this document, which was a, kind of a step-by-step graphic of how we go about developing scenarios. If you recall, we presented this initially in a board retreat. We have continued to use this as kind of the framework for how we actually go through and develop the scenarios. If you look at it, we're actually kind of right in between establishing regional targets and then moving into the regional staff and partnering workshops. One of the things I want to point you to is that those are now being called think tanks. And the reason for that is that we wanted to be a collaborative, engaging brainstorming session. And there's also some confusion regarding kind of what a partnership workshop is and how we've used that type of name in the past. We didn't want to confuse it with something that was being a district-wide initiative or something that had been done elsewhere. So, we moved with the, we went forward with the, the name Think Tank. And again, the ideas, to create ideas, to have a really robust, creative discussion around the types of academic programming that you might be able to introduce into the process. So that'll be coming up in about three weeks, and before then, and now until then, we have a series of engagement workshops, which Selsa will, will brief you on.
Good afternoon, Board of Trustees, and Dr. Cruz. Selsa here with the Department of Communications and Community Engagement. In the next few weeks, as Matias said, we'll, we have two significant engagement opportunities with specific key objectives. For the community visiting sessions, now that we're in the reinvest phase, and I'll make a note, all of this information I'm talking about is available on the website. That's a dynamic resource that's evolving, and I would encourage everyone to consult that website. So, the community visiting sessions, the key objective is, the purpose of the whole session is to inform families of the data sets the district has on each of its schools and how the district plans to use this data to make strategic decisions. This will provide a high-level transparency necessary for the process. Another key objective is to gather community feedback on which academic programs they value most and would like to see, and what repurposing or co-locating ideas they have. We want to learn from our communities what concerns or ideas they have about how the district will use the data to make decisions. And the third key objective is to continue educating around the 2019 school changes process. At every juncture in this process, it should be known, especially during community engagement opportunities, we will continue to always educate about the process. For the think tanks later on in June, still in the reinvest phase, the purpose of the think tanks is to generate creative ideas to support and enhance student learning within each region. I'm happy to talk about either of those or previous engagement phases as well.
Trustee, Letitia Anderson.
Just curious how individuals will be selected for the think tank. Because I've received a lot of concerns about it, and I'm kind of curious myself.
So, we received well over 300 applications. We're pretty excited, evenly dispersed among the five planning regions. And we're asking parents, guardians, folks that are students even, we try to do a heavy recruit for students, folks that are community leaders and partners, and folks that are part of the district as well, administrators that are representative of vertical teams. And basically, we're asking questions in the application, for those that may have seen the application. We're trying to tease out from folks, are they creative? Are they divergent thinking? Are they creative, status quo challenging, big thinkers that are going to lend to the big ideas that we're going to want to extract, so that when staff moves to the next phase in developing draft scenario options, we have those big ideas. And so, those are the kinds of folks we're trying to recruit.
So, what if I am a person who is not necessarily happy that this change is coming about? And, you know, I, I want to be a part of it so that it doesn't affect my area. How, how do you weed that out?
So, we've asked folks in the application to really be empathetic to perspectives and to really listen actively. And when we do the facilitation at the very top of each think tank, we're going to make certain, even in the orientation before these think tanks, that we select folks that really have an aptitude for actively listening and empathizing. And we're going to tease that out in the applications when we read and evaluate each and every one of them upon selection.
Thank you.
We, of course, are also going to look at representation for the region, for the district. We want people thinking differently. Doesn't, that doesn't mean people who just agree with us already from the onset. That's never the way this should work or would be successful. We want folks to even push our own thinking on this approach. That's why we're looking at this from a different lens, so that it, maybe there's a blind spot there for us. So, certainly the things that Selsa mentioned, but it's also folks who understand the dynamics of our different communities and also want to represent that, and we'll bring that forward and talk about the strengths of the communities. Many times, it comes in as a, you know, what's, everything that's going, you know, bad in the community. I find a lot of folks who are talking about, these are our strengths, and that's how I believe in my community. And we want folks like that at the table with us.
Thank you, trustee Ashi.
Hi, Selsa, how are you?
Hi, trustee Ashi.
I have some community engagement questions. I'm sure you're shocked. So, I was wondering if it's possible, first of all, if there's a place where trustees can see the results from the April community engagement?
If you go to austinisd.org/schoolchanges and go to meetings and feedback, a lot of the raw feedback that we collected from the regional workshops, where we had a panel of experts, and we broke out into World Cafe-style breakout sessions, you can download a PDF of the complete feedback received during those workshops, and that is available right now on the website. The thought exchange, as you will recall, was launched at the beginning of the workshops and closed this past Friday, and so staff is currently working on finalizing those and preparing to respond to top thoughts to continue to educate around the process and counter misinformation where appropriate via our responses to the top thoughts on the thought exchange platform. But the feedback that we got from the sessions and the workshops is available online right now.
I had had some interest as well in, or, or I had, have had people approach me about continuing to have the thought exchange. Is that, because I know on the website, it says that it's done at the end of May, but I think people were wondering if, and I know that there had been some reference to it possibly coming back. Is that, is that in the plan?
That is a definite, strong possibility. I, before coming here, I just got off a conference call with our thought exchange, support folks in helping us design this for the next phase. It closed because we were at the end of the reimagine phase. This reinvest phase at the top of the regional visioning sessions, now that we're planning within regions, is how we're going to design the next phase.
Okay. And then, where can I, as a trustee, access what the full community engagement plan is through the whole process?
I'll ask you to repeat that question, but I wanted to, for a second.
Okay.
And then, on May 6th, we sent something to the board about the feedback.
Okay.
And so, you might want to check back to that.
We can resend it.
But we have specific points. Yeah, some feedback we heard, just to kind of synthesize very high level. We asked participants to share their hopes, concerns and questions about the school changes process. We did, we did this at the workshop series and via the thought exchange platform, as mentioned. And some of the things folks told us were that they were hopeful, they were hopeful about include the opportunity to increase equity across the district, more students learning in modernized collaborative environments, a renewed commitment to innovative student-centered teaching and learning, repurposing options that will benefit communities. And then, key concerns that we heard include the potential impact of transitions on students in communities, a concern about potentially breaking highly successful, strong school communities, concern about students' travel time, and ensuring that communities feel decisions were made with them and not to them. And so, the community feedback from this phase has already been used in a ton of ways, and I can elaborate on that, but that's basically a high level, and then you can find it online.
So, the, the question that I'll repeat is, and I know, this has come up several times as it's summertime, and we know that several, our families kind of disconnect, I guess, a little bit from the schools at this time, and there's been a lot of concern about, well, I would love to participate in that, but it's harder for me to do in the summer, whether that be due to childcare, or travel, or whatever it might be. And so, they've been asking me, I've had multiple questions about when will the opportunities be following this week's? And so, I guess my question is, what is the plan or where can people find the plan as it moves forward for further community engagement, say, in August, September?
So, those opportunities have yet to be scheduled, obviously, right? And so, we're very mindful of that the summer, you know, is kind of tough for some parents that we've done as due diligence as we possibly could to get the word out there and spread awareness around these next two weeks and seven regional visiting sessions. Again, five of those are in the evening in each region, one midday, sort of lunchtime, and then one weekend, Saturday midday, to try to accommodate a lot of folks. Basically, when draft scenario options are presented to the Board of Trustees by the Superintendent and Administration anticipated, you know, mid-August, the idea is regional meetings post-refinement of those scenario options around the September timeframe. And so, the thought exchange will likely continue through June, and once we're refining, testing and analyzing and modeling the scenario options that staff develops based on the feedback from these next two weeks of meetings, based on the think tanks, after that, when we have something that concrete, we'll go back out to the community around the September timeframe. And that is going to be depicted in the diagram Matias was pointing to a little earlier, separate from the reinvention roadmap.
And I guess my final question, that's great, yay, thank you for answering that question. And then, the other, I guess the final question that I have is, what would be your hope of the trustee role? Or do you have an expectation of trustees from a community engagement standpoint?
I can't stress enough that, you know, what we've heard overwhelmingly irrespective of this process, communities, you know, want to have things done with them, not to them. And I think actively listening in your role would be something that's extremely valuable in how we're attempting to continue to engender trust throughout this process. All other more specific things, I'll yield to the superintendent on that.
Who's not here?
Who isn't here?
Okay. And then, I'm going to kind of put this out here, but Selsa, I really truly don't necessarily expect you to answer this question if you have thoughts or kind of things, because it actually kind of relates to the next little tab on my folder that has to do with the budget. And I, my, my question around the community engagement and what we're doing is, the school changes process is absolutely 100% tied to the financial reality that the district finds ourselves in. And they certainly don't operate in silos. So, how is that going to be interwoven into our community engagement going forward? Because I feel like that's an extremely important piece as we are continuing to find out what House Bill three means to our district and to our funding. And even looking at, and is, is that even going to be a part of this week's community engagement that we're doing? Is there a, is there a part that, that talks about the budget and that helps tie the two together since they are absolutely 100% linked?
So, I answer the first, then I get back to the latter.
Okay, sorry. I said that, and then I said you didn't have to answer it, so, sorry.
No worries. Those are great questions and great points. We've been hearing the same kinds of questions from our Budget Stabilization Task Force members that, you know, were with us, you know, arm-in-arm throughout the entire process around the budget development and the implications legislatively. And so, we're in close communication with Dr. Medina and Nicole in their respective offices to see how those implications are going to affect this process moving forward. And so, the idea, as we learn more about these implications and the flexibility that we might or might not have, given, you know, potential relief, the idea in these community visioning sessions, because they're come and go, there will be stations designed where staff, staff from Human Capital, Budget and Finance, Operations and Academics will be stationed and can answer questions if we have that information readily available and concretely.
Okay. Thank you.
And trustee Ashi, we, just to note that our next item on the agenda is a full hour on the board budget development as well, so. Trustee Wada.
Well, since you brought up budget and trustee Ashi brought up budget as well, to echo that sentiment, I know there are a lot of folks that are starting to, to look to whether or not there's going to be an impact for their community, and they're starting to, to tune into these meetings and starting to watch more and learn more. I've heard from several people saying, you know, I'm, now that I know this is happening, I am committed to, to really paying attention and working hard to advocate for my community. So, to all of those folks watching, I would highly encourage you to, to tune in to the next agenda item that we have, which is our discussion of our budget. I think there'll be a lot of good information there to help understand what's forcing a lot of these conversations in terms of budgetary constraint that we face primarily due to our, our situation with recapture. So, so with all of that said, I, I did want to just make one more plea. I've made a lot of pleas around communication, and apologies to the Department of Communication and Communication for continuing to hammer and hammer and hammer you guys about this stuff. But, but I noticed that as community groups are jumping into this at different points in the process, they are continuing to look for any artifact, any shred of information, any detail that they can find that might start to glean some sort of sense of what's happening to their particular community. And I would just ask to make sure that we're speaking in consistent language across all of our documents. I know we have a lot of good information on the website, but I also know we're looking at things like a reinvention roadmap, we're looking at a process map. There's different language used within each of those artifacts, and I think that can start to breed confusion, which in turn starts to breed mistrust. And, and really ultimately, I see that we have a trust problem because no matter how much we as trustees are going out and communicating, and I see staff going out and communicating as well, I keep seeing folks coming back to, but I'm looking at this little sentence that I saw over here that makes me think that something's not being said, or that there's something unspoken. So, that's a big challenge that's ongoing, and I think it's one that really falls along our communications team to really make sure that we're being very crisp and very consistent in how we're articulating things. I also want to ask too, that we make sure that we remove jargon and speak in plain English in all of our communications as well. Things like talking about KPIs, I think, you know, I've had the, the wonderful pleasure of learning the hard way what a KPI is, but I would assume that a lot of people don't know what a key performance indicator is unless they have been in a business situation or environment that used that particular term. So, so just as an example, so those are things I'd really like to ask you guys to really be very mindful of as we move forward. I also, in terms of questions for you tonight, I wanted to ask what, for me, I think is the biggest burning question, and that is something that I don't feel like I have a clear definition on, and that is, within this process, as you guys are looking at scenarios and examining options and thinking about opportunities and thinking about constraints, what's in scope for you at this point and what is out of scope for you at this point? Meaning, like, what is, what types of changes are being considered and what types of changes fall outside of scope? And that's a bit of a pressing question, because I think we've, we've talked a lot about every school's on the table, everything's on the table, everything's being considered. But at the end of the day, I think that that's a bit of an overstatement, and I'd really like to understand what's in scope and what's out of scope in terms of the recommendations that will be coming forward.
So, I'll, I'll start off with the response. You know, at this point, as we go through the process and begin to understand kind of what the long-term vision academically is for the district, I, I've heard that same sentiment, that, you know, school changes mean something different to every school. And that's, that's correct. It's, you know, and for some schools, for some people, it might seem as though it's consolidations. For many, many others, it's actually looking at programming, it's adding resources, it's looking at a different way to leverage the building. And so, I don't know that there's something specifically that's in scope or out of scope when you look at the entire district. Now, as we begin to look at scenarios and as they become made, as they become public and presented to y'all, I think y'all will quickly kind of see kind of how the ranges of scopes coalesce around certain opportunities within certain regions or certain parts of the city. But as of right now, you know, by design, all ideas are on the table, and we're going to explore them all. And here, before too long, we're going to come together, once we have feedback from the think tanks, after we have feedback from community meetings, and after academics has kind of set the vision, we're going to say, okay, what are the great ideas that are right in front of us and which ones we want to pursue and run through the analysis? So, it's a long-winded way to say that, at this point, really, nothing is out of scope here in the next six weeks. You know, I think it'll be very clear what things are more likely to become completed included within a scenario.
And maybe let me ask it a different way. If, would we look at, say, something as disruptive as realigning every vertical team to have pure vertical teams in the district? Is that something that we would consider to be in scope at this point? Or would that be prohibitively disruptive at this point?
Yeah, I would say better alignment of vertical teams. Like, we want to have more consistency with it, but would we, because we've talked about that before. Do I see that happening in this situation? I don't see that. As a complete change of a feeder pattern, just because, I do not see that. Ours is based on a neighborhood school concept. That's, that's actually one of the guiding principles. So, we need to be strict. So, I'm glad you're asking the, the question, because I myself have been hearing a lot of these types of things. But we're using the guiding principles as the guiding principles, and that's what we say we believe in. And in fact, our current families, 80% of our families do pick their home school. That we say, this is your home school, and they pick that. We just learned with Mendez. Even when kids have the options, they still pick Mendez. That's their home school. And it's, I believe it's 85% for elementaries and 85% for high schools. High school students that still pick their home school environment. I do believe in choice, so we do have transfer policies that allow for that, majority to minority, transfer sibling, or just the school of choice like Garza. There's a reason for all those. I'd like to create more choice opportunities. But I do believe, and I believe this as a parent, a parent has to make that decision. I think once we just sort of make it just because, that doesn't feel quite right to me. It's got to be rooted in what's it going to do for the student, the very thing that Michelle started off with. The vision is to provide these, get better access and opportunities for all of our students. That's what I want to hear as a parent. Then I can start talking about this. If I hear a different direction, like operational or just transfers or something, I'm really going to, I'm not going to understand. I'm just not. I'm starting from a different point, and I just think our parents have been, I think we have to respect their perspective on that.
And to that same end, would we take a school that has, within its, its home attendance boundaries, the right number of, of kids for the facility, the school is, has a robust amount of programming and curriculum? And would we, for some reason, and, and the outcomes are strong for every student or most students in that building, would we ever tear apart a model like that to move them somewhere else, just for the sake of moving them somewhere else?
Well, that's-
It's a pointed question, because there's a lot of rumor that's spinning around about that very concept.
Yeah. Well, I think there are a lot of variables in that one, right? So, when, when that is, if all that is in one, and the school is at 100%, 160% over-enrolled, will there be some alignment? There will be. Even by design, three brand-new schools are going to come up, those schools are being, they're proposing the bond to offset enrollment. One is, you know, Southwest Austin, one in Blazer, which we're going to have the groundbreaking tomorrow, Southeast Austin, and the new middle school. That in and of itself is going to create a boundary change. Other situations are going to address those.
And please make sure that you articulate that very clearly, because for some of Southwest Austin, they're not paying attention that that is a brand-new elementary school in Southwest Austin that we are drawing boundaries for, that will have a ripple effect around the immediate elementary schools around it. Because what's happening is, other parts of Southwest Austin, further north of that, are not aware of that boundary change, and when they hear boundary change, they think, that means you're changing my boundaries, and suddenly my child's going somewhere else. So, so again, it's, it's being as explicit and as clear as we can be about what those things are.
Right. Exactly. And those are the for-sures. So, when I think of boundary change, and people ask, are you going to have any? Absolutely. There's going to be at least three. But the impact of that may be 10 to 12 schools. When you look at a middle school area, and just in that area, how is that going to impact? Because we have single-gender schools that have optionality to that school or the others. There are a lot of complicated parts. So, when I do speak, I do speak in, like, the district, and I am. I do think there are regional issues. And by looking at our, our data in this way, it's going to pick up some different perspectives, some different points of view. But we're going to look at it from guiding principle run, guiding principle one around academic achievement. But what about the next 10 or 20 years? So, you met standard based on STAR, great. But can I say that we're good for the next 10 or 20 years? I'd say absolutely not. No, we can't. say absolutely not. No, we can't. It's like, what are we going to do for the next ten, twenty years? So guiding principle one is about achievement. Guiding principle two is around the actual learning environment. We know that that's going to change for next year. Actually, yeah, we're going to open seven schools. That opportunity is going to change significantly for those schools. So I know that's going to be part of the change process. Another one is what the direct question that we're asking about. So if we don't, if we aren't going to use a school in this region as a school, what do you want to use it for? Even the city has come back and said, we want in on that, because we're planning for the city of Austin, if you AISD, you have some real estate, and we're all looking around affordability, then where could we use that best? What about recreation space? So I, I've, obviously, these are all really big ideas, or it's all district-wide. It doesn't, these are all going to be matched up based on how we can improve an area of the city. And so it's going to be all very different as far as the strategy that we're going to apply. But it could have other boundary changes. So I'm not just saying that it's only those three. It's going to impact others, because then another school is going to be offset enrollment. We're going to still use our boundary advisory committee, so we're still going to use that. It still comes to the board for approval. Program-wise, we're still going to implement an early college high school at Akins next year. So we're not going to stop any of that because this is going on, that's still going to continue. And I will say that, just having seen our graduations, and look at the programs we had started maybe eight years ago, seven years ago, that were challenging at the beginning, now we can't get enough of it. Every time we start asking, how many students have earned college credit? We had students earn college credit before, maybe four percent of that graduating class. But when that goes up by design intentional, not because kids figured it out, just, but because we're providing that opportunity for them, because part of the system and the design. Those two, first two guiding principles for me, that's the direction. The closure, consolidation, repurposing is an effect of it. And I get it, it's real. I'm not saying that it's not. But those first two guiding principles, that to me, that sets out the vision, the expectations, and then that creates a lot of robust conversation. How do we prepare kids or ensure they're prepared ten to twenty years down the road? These entering pre-K kids, kindergarten kids, when they finish school, what is it though, what are the expectations for them? So we always have to sort of come back as to, why did we do this? What is this about? Is, is the why because of money or operations? Those are effects of, but the why is really about that learning opportunity. So I wanted to, I guess I was going to start off by saying that at the beginning, but, but those are very real issues. And I do respect a parent's perspective, because these are real for parents. Anywhere you go, anywhere you go.
Thank you for that. And my last question is, you know, recognizing again that, that people come into this process and engaging in this process at different points and may have missed along the way, you know, why we are where we are with the think tanks and what's happening. Would you mind giving a, just a really quick recap on why we chose that planning map that we have that divides the district into five regions, and also what the expectations are for the think tank? It's, it seems like a very tall ask within a seven-hour working day for those groups, and so I'd like to just understand how each of those planning region think tanks will do their work.
So I'll start off regarding the planning regions, just as a refresher. So the planning regions are a tool that we use through this process. And the idea is to look at data differently. We have vertical teams, we have feeder patterns. We know how we do business today, but the idea was if we could look at our academic programs, our facilities, how we support students and staff through a different lens, we might come up with new ideas. Historically, we'd used, if you look at the planning clusters from 2017 FMP, there are three and four elementary schools, sometimes five. Even past, before that, we used larger, more geographically aligned planning regions that tend to use a north-south orientation and have larger thoroughfares as boundaries. So the idea was, if we think about this process differently, if we're truly reinventing, then let's start from a different place. As we move through the scenarios, the planning regions will fall away and we'll end up with just opportunities within campuses. So that's where we are right now. And the idea is, we will look at all the data within a planning region. We'll have summary information, almost like a snapshot, so we can understand how much deferred maintenance are we carrying within a planning region. In some areas, it's up to, you know, two hundred, three hundred million dollars. And we'll also know at the district level how much deferred maintenance we're carrying. So the idea is we're always kind of looking at, you know, all of our data through planning region, through the planning region process as well. But then, once we get to a certain point, you know, we're also checking it against vertical teams and feeder patterns. So again, it's just a way to introduce creative ideas. And again, they'll fall away as we move through the scenario development process. And they're, all the scenarios are not in isolation. You know, they engage one another, you know, so it's, you know, we have middle schools in certain planning regions and the high schools that they tip, that they fit to now in a different planning region, and that's okay. Because at the end of the day, you know, it's the entire district that's going to be, you know, proposed. It's not, you know, this specific component without this, right? It's all one solution that we're going to be bringing to the board. Regarding the think tanks, the idea is, we want to have creative people support us through this endeavor. We recognize that if we use the same planning tools and the same planning process we had in the past, we might end up in the same place. So the idea was, let's go out and let's identify folks that are partners with us, folks that live in these areas, folks that maybe have a different perspective, and let's bring them to the table. Our objective is not to have them develop a scenario. Our objective is to have them introduce creative academic ideas. You know, the development of the scenario, the actual workings of it and how it'll actually come together, that's staff's work. But we wanted them to come to the table. We presented them where we are today. We would ta, take them through kind of our academic vision, you know, as currently defined. And then we would have them present to us things that we might not even know, things that we haven't even identified. And through that process, hopefully, you know, we come up with some new ideas. It's a seven-hour meeting. The idea is we have between twenty-eight and thirty-five individuals per planning region. The meetings would occur within each of the planning areas themselves. The, each of the, they would break up into teams of seven or eight. They would be facilitated by facilitator. This person would continue to push them to be creative, to use the data sets that we have available to us. We also have the academic programming database, the FCA, the finance and operation databases. And so we'll have someone there, you know, providing that support as well. So the idea is, let them think, let them be a brain, kind of a brainstorming session. And out of these ideas, out of this effort will come good ideas, and we'll test them briefly, and then, you know, they'll begin to categorize them, and we'll see which ones move forward based on the feedback.
So you don't anticipate that it could be something that could bleed over until we need to add another day and add another day and add another day because it's growing?
That's, that's not the intent through this, at this point. In the application process, we did leave it open-ended for a second meeting, again, wanting to always kind of double back if there's opportunity to communicate to them kind of what we heard, how it was considered. But it's not something that we believe would spill over to a second day. I mean, we're keeping it very, very tight. We're trying to make sure that we do a really good job of managing the entire meeting. And we're doing them back-to-back-to-back with the same facilitators, with the same subject matter experts, and the same technical support. So it's very consistent. They're going to see, you know, each region's going to have the same, like, supporting cast guiding them through the process.
Thank you. And just one last comment. Happy birthday, Ms. Cabasos.
Thank you. Trustees, trustee Singh and then trustee Letitia Anderson.
Thank you all so much for being here. I want to share a little bit what I've been hearing from the part of town where I live, which is Southwest Austin. And there is, there are a lot of concerns about, you know, our schools that are already integrated, they're diverse, the programs are strong and they're doing well. They are very worried that, you know, these things are working and that, and it might get destroyed. Part of the narrative is that the district is going to use their kids or our kids in our part of town to be sent over to schools that are not performing well just to pump up the test scores. And so I have, I have tried, you know, to convey that that's not our intent in the district. But I would just really love for, for Michelle Cabasos in particular to talk a little bit about that, because this is dealing directly with academics and what's actually happening in the schools. Just to kind of reassure people, you know, I know you don't have an exact answer of what the scenario's going to look like yet, but just kind of the intent behind this.
I have an absolute answer. We are absolutely not going to do that. Our intent is for all children to learn at higher levels, period. There is no other expectation behind that. It is plain and simple, and it is for every student. I will, Michelle will respond to it. But that, that is not what we are doing here at all. The programming pieces aren't all going to be because now STAR is going to improve. That, I do not think that that's a high level. That's not a vision for ten to twenty years. I don't think a student who's in kindergarten right here, when they, or even a student who's an eighth grader, when they get their first job, they're going to ask them about their STAR score. They're going to ask them about, how do you get along with others? Can you think critically? Can you actually problem solve? What do you do when you don't actually, when you're not successful? A lot of the things that are vials and sals we're talking about, that's what we want our kids to have these experiences in schools. So our thing is to lift performance up for every individual student. Punto. That's it. How we do that is going to be very much more complex to bring in new ideas, new programming, new approaches. But let me have Michelle respond on that. I just wanted to, on that very thing when you said, I may not, that I do.
Yeah. I want to echo that. That is not what this is about. This is about giving our kids opportunity and access to enriching environments that inspire them. And so we are going to look at programs that are working and functioning very well, and how do we, how do we spread that even further? What other programming options do our families and communities want that we haven't even considered? You know, trustee Wagner, you asked about, you know, is there anything off the table? Right now, we need the biggest, best, boldest ideas from people to really push our thinking and push us to create opportunities for students that don't even yet exist.
I appreciate that. Thank you for being so emphatic about that, because I think, I think that is the message that, that a lot of us are trying to put out there. So just hearing it coming straight from you and coming straight from you could help a lot. I also wanted to know if you could, another big concern I've been hearing is about the timeline for changes. There are people, you know, there's some people who are worried that we're voting on something in October, and cha, all the changes are going to happen in the 2020 school year. So if you could address that a little bit and also maybe talk about how grandfathering might factor into this, whatever, you know, et cetera, et cetera.
So I'll, I'll speak to the schedule. So the, this is a, a large plan. You know, it, it can't be implemented in one year. You know, we don't know necessarily what'll come out of these scenarios or what ultimately gets approved by the board. But I am preparing for a process and a planning implementation schedule that'll take several years. We don't know if it'll be two years, we don't know if it'll be three years. But it, again, it's not all going to happen in August 2020. The idea is, you know, we implement what we can that first year, recognize that we, recognizing that we do have some modernization projects coming online. You know, by the time August 2020 hits, you know, we'll have five, seven modernization projects up and running. And so we need to consider that. We want to make sure that we're kind of already identifying that as a target milestone, because we want to have as many students in those great places to learn. So that is a data point that we have to try to hit. That being said, just given the magnitude of what we're trying to get through, it's, it's going to take a couple of years to implement.
And I have one last que, one last comment, if I may. This is about the, the equity of the input and feedback that we're getting. I, one of the things I worry about is the, in the thought exchange, for example, I've, I worry that that's keeping out a whole swath of people in Austin from expressing their viewpoints. I know that we do have the, the face-to-face meetings and things like that, but can you just tell us a little bit about how you might balance some of the things that you're seeing, you know, the thought exchange and, and the face-to-face meetings, which tend to attract a certain demographic, and make sure that we're actually hearing from everybody, including the folks that don't typically engage in online discussions and things like that?
So when we begin to start analyzing the thought exchange that we just closed this Friday, of course, it's always the goal to make sure that we solicit as representative of feedback as we possibly can that reflects the district's population, right, and the city's population. We obviously try to supplement that with in-person meetings and engagements, one-off engagements, district-wide meetings. And so to the extent that we can aggregate the data in a way that factually displays where it's coming from, that best informs your decisions, is how we're going to structure that analysis. Through thought exchange, we did see an influx of participation, and so it's, we're working with the folks at thought exchange, because it's designed such that they have an algorithm so that you kind of weed out folks that stack the deck. But we wanted to make it easier and remove barriers to entry to the thought exchange. And so to do that, we remove the option of having folks register and just continue on and participate. And so that's something we're going to look at this next round, to see if that can mitigate what, what I think your concern is.
I mean, I, I'm thinking even going, I mean, I appreciate that, and I was happy that I didn't have to register when I went in there myself, so thank you. I'm thinking about maybe how we might engage our community in more of a grassroots manner, like working through our churches or working through our, maybe through our parent support specialists and that network, because a lot of people just aren't really going to, you know, a lot of people just get their news and they talk about this with other folks in a safe place. And so I really want to make sure that we honor that and that we're sensitive to that.
Absolutely. I think something that we did that was responsive to that, that very suggestion, something that we're very proud of is, last week, on Wednesday night, we hosted an all-Spanish school changes meeting. Trustee Dr. Jane Mathias was in attendance, so thank you for that. Over two-hundred-and-fifty parents and families and kids were in attendance. I want to say a little over ten were English-speaking parents that used headsets. The meeting was administered in all Spanish. And we talked about school changes, the reimagine and reinvest phase, and took folks through the entire process and met them at a level they're at with regard to the terms that we used. And we were very deliberate and intentional with how we delivered that meeting. We partnered with the Celebrity Univision Zone, Leslie Montoya, to be the sort of speaker and draw folks to the meeting. And we were pretty satisfied with that successful turnout there. And so we'll continue to do more.
Thank you.
Trustee Singh, I just wanted, for governance perspective, just as an FYI, you mentioned the October vote. So just for the new board members, we have a per-board policy, all school changes or these kinds of changes have to be made for the next school year, have to be made by December. So I just wanted to make sure I like that. Trustee Letitia.
Mine is more so a comment. Listening to some of the comments up here is the exact reason why I am calling for a system and a policy to be in place to address institutional racism. When you hear comments that say, you know, we don't want those kids in our schools, well, those kids' parents actually pay taxes, surprise. So I am requesting for future agenda item, some system and a policy to address when this comes about, whether it's a consolidation, whether it's a boundary change, or whatever the case is going to be, something that's put in place for when students get to whatever school they're going to, that when institutional racism comes about, us as a board, make a statement to say, we not going to tolerate racism in any form. So that's my request, because I'm, I'm really, really sick of hearing the, those kids and my kids and this, you know, superior complex that some of these comments I'm hearing. So that's my request.
Thank you, trustee Letitia Anderson. We will make sure and bring that up in our operations meeting, operations committee meeting. Trustee Allen?
So, thank y'all. I really, I'm appreciating the calmness with which y'all are providing this information today, relative to the feeling I have when I'm in public. So I just kind of want, I hope you realize that we're putting a lot of trust in you. So, so know that, because it's really hard to explain to the public what these scenarios might be and what. And so we are putting a lot of trust in you guys right now till we can get to those spaces. And I, that's hard. So I think what you're seeing is that's, that's really hard. But I do think it's, it is here. I, I think that you've presented some really strong work for us in the past. And so, you know, we have our FabPak that can kind of help us understand how this works, and you've been involved, I'm speaking directly- I'm speaking directly to you, Mathias, so thank you. But I do, I want to also say, um, our communications team and Michelle, I'm hearing that that is sort of what's going to get us past this rough spot is a lot of faith in, in you guys and the work that you're pulling together. So just know that that's sort of the base of where we believe this can go. So thank you. On the timeline, I'm hearing some of the same things as, as some different trustees. And, and right now, without knowing what these scenarios are, it's, it does seem a little quick to not even know what the scenarios are until August and then be expected to vote within two months. Because if you are talking about a boundary change, I mean, southwest elementary school, you've been working on that for a year already. So can you talk a little bit more on what really are you expect, expecting in terms of the vote? Is it, are we voting that this boundary will change immediately? And I mean, it kind of give us some perspective that we can help people understand what this really does look like along their path.
I'm going to attempt to answer that question and not be too long-winded. You know, between, by, by design, this process has in, started with the board, right? In previous planning processes, we started with an advisory body and then that recommendation would go to the board. So by design, this has been kind of turned around because we believe it's that important. It requires y'all's input, y'all's feedback. It requires y'all's leadership to get us all the way through the board vote. That being said, you know, not unlike how we started with the guiding principles, we had multiple work sessions and then board retreats. I suspect that's going to occur moving forward. I have multi, I have actually a milestone schedule that Dr. Cruz and the leadership team kind of worked through that distilled out of a much larger, more, much more detailed schedule. That being said, you know, when the vote occurs, it's going to be a report. It's going to be a document that shows you what is included within the school changes, how it impacts each school and, and a recommended timeline, right, for consideration. It's going to be a strong recommendation because they're going to be timeline-dependent in many cases in order for us to kind of execute the entire thing. So when you talk about boundary changes, my preference would for that, for that vote to occur at the same time as the entire solution gets approved. Because any school changes or any, depending if, if they are implemented in the first year in 2020, then the latest we could do it, as we just talked about, was December of, of 2019. So really, between October and December is, is the only opportunity we have to propose any school boundary changes or any changes for that matter between, you know, for the 2020 school year. You know, it's going to be a, a robust document. We've identified ways to present to y'all through the work session, you know, what these begin to look like. They're going to be refined, but I suspect by the time we get to really August and mid-September, they're going to be fairly well-defined. At that point, you know, we'll be carrying two or three scenarios and we're going to be going in front of y'all. And the idea we actually talked about today was perhaps meeting in smaller groups like we did with the board retreat. Maybe it's one-on-one, but we need to get everybody on the dais to understand in great detail what the recommendation is. And that's our responsibility. We have to figure out the best way to communicate that to y'all. And it's going to take a lot of time. And it's going to take several work sessions and, and board retreats to do it. But what you're going to see, I think, is what we saw on the 2017 bond program is at the time, by the time we get there, hopefully, we've made some good decisions along the way. And we're now communicating perhaps and discussing how we implement. Maybe it's timing, but we're not necessarily having a lot of discussion about the overall solution. And so, but the, my vision for this, again, that's dependent on Dr. Cruz and President Rodriguez, is that it's one vote. The BAC, the Boundary Advisory Committee, you know, certainly in the past, there's been a robust process and, and that they've gone through to communicate boundary changes. In this instance, you know, if we recommend, if we recommend a boundary change, what we're likely to recommend is that the students move to school A and school B. Now, the detailed line work of how that actually occurs between the two areas, you know, that's certainly something that we can communicate. But the expectation is that X percent goes here and Y percent goes here. How that line is drawn across the streets, you know, I think that's an opportunity we potentially could, you know, get feedback from the BAC, given their experience and their expertise. But we would not want to go to y'all with a recommendation if you didn't understand how a school change would occur, regardless if it's programming, regardless if it's staff, regardless if it's anything. I mean, we want, we want to have enough detail to show you that we can do it. So my, my, it's a plan. It's implementing a plan.
So much like the FMP, we, we approved a plan. But any specific change to a school, whether it be a closure or a boundary change, comes back to us in a different vote, a later vote. Are you saying that would be different?
Well, I, I think, so in my mind, it's, it's the, it's the date itself. Whether it's, you know, multiple votes, sequential votes, depending on, you know, what the board policy is. But the idea would be to bundle as much of it as possible. We need as much time as possible on our side to actually implement. And if you think about it, you know, if we have the end of the fall semester and then we're quickly into the spring semester, you know, we need to educate any school that might be going through a change. We want to make sure we have all the contracts in place. We want to make sure that we're supporting the staff and students appropriately. So there's a lot of planning that's going to go into it once the decision's made. So it'll be a governance discussion when we talk about the sequence of the, of the actions.
I've heard several people saying not everything, I think it's mainly Nicole, not everything is intended to happen in 2020, 2021.
Correct.
So I think giving us some kind of understanding, we've also been going through training on everything in moderation with control. You know, I mean, how are you building into all of this, the social, emotional activities that our families need to keep up with us? Because while we may not feel like this is quick because we've been working for a long time, when they just get involved in August, thinking things are going to be changing by October. I mean, how do we, how do we now plan that piece? Is that something y'all are working on? Are you leaving that to the board?
We're going to be looking from, you know, to receive input from the board about the best way to implement it. You know, one of the concerns that we have is, you know, having a lot of time go between board votes and, you know, any changes that occur and, you know, if the second vote doesn't come or if the third vote doesn't come. You know, just if, the more we break it out and, and not, maybe it's that you approve a plan and then the recommendation that plan is you have subsequent votes and those votes are detailed and lined out. That's one solution. And the first vote would occur in October. We'd have to just work with Dr. Cruz and figure out. But in my, in, what it's meant to be is a detailed, robust plan with a timeline of how to get you there, how to get all of us there.
So I don't know if you were paying attention at the beginning of a work session. I read the calendar of events for the board work for the next, till the next work session, basically. So we're already reading August. So if you are, we need to be putting these things in our calendars. So I, I, we don't, so my anxiety is coming back. We have a board operations meeting on the 12th. And so that's where we schedule things. So if there's anything that we need to be putting in our calendars for August and really September, we need to know that and, and on the 12th.
Dr. Cruz and, and leadership team, we worked through together a milestone schedule. And so once we refine it, we'll, Dr. Cruz, I'm sure, will provide that.
Right, and some of those will be board notices. Some are going to be actual meetings and work session. And we'll go back just to make sure the, I thought the August and October votes are already in. Well, we've added some others.
Okay.
Just, you know, understanding where we are and then other, just, you know, small group work that we're going to have to do. But I do say that it's going to be one plan with one vote. And then we go off and they, and even within that is that what can we do? Because in addition to sort of what you talked about, the predictability control and within moderation, it's just also, operationally, we can only handle so much and the organization could only help handle so much. And this is just one part of what we do. You know, where the impact may be around 5,000 students in year one, which is big, there's still 75,000 other students who still have to come in and learn and excel and achieve, and none of that's off the table. So we have to, that's part of this one too. Well, I know like we sort of talk about these as decision points that come operationally. The reason why we always have to look at big picture-wise is because we're looking at an entire organization. And, and there's also just some realities, you know, just human capital realities and some fiscal impacts.
So I just, I've, I've really appreciated, Dr. Cruz, your perspective and your statements tonight have been strong. They've been purposeful. And I am going to be looking to you to lead us through that predictability, control, in moderation space and trust that you will help us get there. So thank you.
Thank you, trustee Allen. Trustees, any other questions? If, yes, trustee Singh.
Um, I, I kind of want to echo that and, and I'm just going to ask that you guys, and I know you are going to, but just be brave in this process, you know. And because it is so easy for, for all of us to sort of, I think, succumb to the loudest voices in the room sometimes. And, and the whole point of this whole process was really to make sure we had equity. And I keep going back to, we've, you know, I, I know I'm preaching to the crier here, but I just know it's going to be hard. The reason the district hasn't done this before is precisely because it's hard. And it's very polarizing, this whole experience. So, you know, I, I almost feel like we need restorative practices among ourselves as trustees, you know, in the community. I had my first, you know, angry mob last week. It wasn't fun. But, you know, I think that's, it's just part of what we're going to do. So I just ask, like, even when, one idea might be when you present the scenarios to us, if you think about having like a bold scenario, a bolder scenario and like the boldest scenario, you know, like a range. Because that, that, I think that's the one thing that's going to keep us from really achieving this vision that we have is like our, our fear and of, you know, angry mobs. And we've just got to, you know, just keep going. So I really appreciate all the thought you're putting into this and I can't wait to see what, what y'all come up with.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And thank you for your commitment to making sure that all citizens engage in this process. So appreciate that.